Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Everybody, I'm Art Whitman, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board. I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, August 1st, 2022 at 6:30 PM. The first thing I've got to announce is that there is an addition to the agenda, and it is the approval of a liquor license for Buck North LLC doing business as Buck Stop. Does anybody have a conflict with that or anything else on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. The next thing is minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One of them is a very short one. That was the one that we did approve the bid for Weaver. That is on July 21st, and myself, Mike, and Joe, okay? Entertained a motion to accept this minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so I have...
And I will abstain.
Right. So I have 302, right?
Yep.
I just have to sign now. And July 18th, a regular meeting. I was here, Mike, Martha, Tony, and Joe. Everybody was here. A motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Warrants. We have payroll warrant for $25,212.76.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I have check warrant number three for $36,371.40.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Items over $1,000. Bennington County Regional. I guess this is some work they'd done on a sidewalk or something. Bennington County Shares for $1,102. Business Services, $1,404. G.A. Bow Fuel for $1382 and $1377. Innovative Service Solutions, that's probably for the chloride, $4933. Sycamore Landscaping, $2625. Wallingford Crush Stone for $1116. And Weemee Daily, $1429. Weemee Daily, $5827. That does it. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next is announcements. The most pressing one is that we need people to sign up on their DRB and planning board. It's critical. It's not fair to a person that has an application in to only have three members of the DRB because it's very possible that they can't get a forum and all that sort of stuff. So please, we need to shake the trees and see if somebody is willing to... We need several. We need two to fill positions and two more for the... And that's just on the DRB. Two alternates and two people to fill positions, and then the planning board is also short. So please. Anybody else have any announcements?
No.
Public comments? Is there anybody for public comments?
There are several people on the screen, but they're all muted.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comments?
I am just waiting for the ARPA stuff to come up to have my public comment be done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Treasurers?
Can you speak a little clearer into the microphone, please? Thank you very much.
Me? How's that?
It's a little...
Which one picks it up? This one?
This one is...
Snowball.
Snowball? Okay. We'll pull that a little bit closer, okay? Treasurers' report. This is a big day.
Yes, the moment you've all been waiting for. We're setting the tax rate today. I sort of teased this last time. Can you guys hear me okay now? Do we need to turn the microphone around to me?
I think it would be good to do that, just so that they can hear, because there's a lot of folks on tonight.
Yeah, so I can... First, I'll just give you the bottom line. Can you scroll down just a little bit, Shelley?
Of course.
And I'll tell you that what it looks like, the number I'm going to ask you to vote on for the municipal tax rate in total, and this includes both the tax rate itself and the local agreement number, you see it's there in yellow. So what I have calculated it at is .4823 per $100 of assessed value. That compares, last year it was .4561. Last year was an austerity year. We knew that this was going to go up this year because it's following an austerity year, but so the budget that was voted on at town meeting was about $100,000 more than last year. The only question mark was the size of the grand list, which has now been finalized. The Yeoman-like work done by the listers or the assessor and Gina, they found $4 million in the grand list. So that means that when the grand list grows, it means that it drives the tax rate down very, very marginally, but at least it's going in the right direction. So that number, 4823, would have been even a little bit higher if they hadn't found all that value in the grand list. So that's very good news. The way this is calculated is basically just the budget as voted every year at town meeting. And then that is the local agreement portion of that is the contribution by the town to veterans. We kick in an extra... It removes $20,000 from the assessed values right off, so the calculation is off a lower number. And so that affects us to the tune of about $10,000 in recovered taxes that the town covers. We also have voted an exemption for the Grange Hall and the Shasbury Community Hall, so they are tax-free now. So the town picks up the tab for those two properties as well. And then we have a little plug in there for possible abatements. You can see there it's $2,000, just in case we have any abatements. So that's just a little wiggle room. It's usually not that much, but just in case, we've got that set aside, too. So the calculation ends up, as I say, being .4823. And you can see the education rates are listed there. I don't have the comparison to last year, but they have, in fact, all four of those rates have gone down from last year. The bottom line is that if you are a property owner, a homesteader, with a $300,000 property, your taxes will go up about $60 or $70 this year, maybe $80. That's the gross tax without any state payment in there. So it's about as flat as it could possibly be with the combination of education going down and the municipal rate going up very, very slightly. Any questions about any of that? I know I was talking fast and I said a lot of things.
No.
Okay. So the number I'm going to ask you to vote on is that .4823 municipal rate, which will include both the local agreement and the municipal tax. So I think that you probably need to... Somebody needs to make a motion?
Yes. So if there are no questions, oh, actually, we'll have discussion afterwards. So probably the best way is to make a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate that we've been presented by the treasurer.
.4823 per $100 of evaluation.
Of assessed value.
Assess valuation.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any questions or anything? It's quite complicated, but Melanie does...
A great job. Thank you. And thanks for putting this all together in a very easy-to-read manner.
Any questions? All set?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 500. You have a tax rate.
Okay. Great.
All right. Good job.
So those can be sent out now?
So I will... I have my paper, which is a kind of a triumph in and of itself. I saw that all of the treasurers are complaining they're not getting their paper this year, but I got my order in early. So we have our paper. We're going to have our... I've got my toner. I am a holder...
You ready?
Holding machine. I am all set to go. So I'm hoping to get them out later this month. It takes a couple of weeks to do not only the printing, but there's some things I have to lodge with the state and whatnot. But I hope that we'll... Certainly, in two more meetings, I will be able to report that taxes are already coming in. So it looks like we did dodge a bullet with having to get a line of credit. I think that will not be necessary.
Yeah, good.
To save us money. Okay.
I guess that was one of the questions I'm going to ask you if we're going to... You think we're going to make it?
Looks like we're going to be okay. If we want to look at the... Shelley, can you bring up the cash flow document?
Yeah, that bottom line's always been pretty good.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. We... And also, I just got today, and it's not reflected here, got another $20,000 in delinquent taxes. It's the lowest I've ever seen.
Amazing.
And that's partly because of the people taking advantage of that program I keep talking about.
That's wonderful.
It's very, very heartening to see that. I love seeing that number go down. But anyway, just to talk about what happened in July. That tax reconciliation, I believe I talked about that at the last meeting. That's just the correction of the amount of education taxes that we had to collect. And it actually, we collected a little bit more than we had to once they did the reconciliation. So that's what that money is. Highway State Aid is that quarterly payment that we see. So that was a nice amount of revenue to come in at this time of year when we're trying to avoid that line of credit. Shelley, if you could go down to the bottom half of that same document. So that's our cash position as of yesterday. Actually, it's a little bit better now, although it's going to get worse once I write out the checks you just approved. So... But we're in good shape. And then you can see I did the comparison to budget. It's too early for any of that to mean anything, but you can see that it looks a lot like last year. And Shelley, any questions about any of that?
Can we look at the reserve fund spreadsheet real quick? Not much going on. Yep. You can see... And we talked about that $48,000 last time. That's a Class III road grant. The only other thing going on is the water payments that are still coming in, about Any questions about that?
That Class III road improvement, that's White Creek?
Yes, that is... I don't know if it's specifically White Creek, but it's... It's all Class III roads, which is...
I thought it... Yeah, don't ask me. That's not my area of expertise. I don't want to speculate.
God.
I thought it was unpaved, but...
Yes, it's all unpaved roads.
Yeah.
White Creek Road is a Class II road, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew we had some roads worth going on down there.
Yeah. Yes, that... There is a lot of work that's got to be done there. We're going to actually be hiring somebody to engineer that, too, in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, you're welcome.
Art, you may want to turn that now again, just so that the folks on can listen.
Roads report is next. Due to vacations and everything else, Mikey Anani, who is the road foreman, he's on vacation until the 14th. David is... Dave Kernan is out of the office until a week from today. So if you have any problems with dust or other concerns to do with the road, please call the town clerk. She is, when you dial the Shasbury number, it is the number one, I think, choice, and she will get in touch with the assistant foreman up at the road, at the garage, or myself, and we will deal with it the best we can, okay? But other than that, Weaver was already started work on the two projects that we approved at the last meeting. This is where Blueberry Hill comes down onto West Mountain Road, and there's also some work to be done on Sally Ganon Road. The long-awaited mower finally has all the right parts.
Oh, good.
And it is being put together. And Mike says, "I really don't want it delivered until I'm back to make sure everything is right on it," and all that sort of stuff. So after the 14th of August, we may get some roadside mowing done. It's going to be a rush job. We're way behind, and we apologize, but it's just... Just all the things that go on ordering new stuff.
We'll definitely be working that track.
I guess so. Luckily, it wasn't a chip that we needed. It was just some parts. Does anybody else have any other news on roads reports or anything?
It looked like the Blueberry Hill is already done. Is that...
It probably could be, because he wanted to get going on it, and that's why we had the emergency meeting and everything.
Got you. Okay, I was surprised. I went through there yesterday, and it's like, oh, it's already done.
Yep. It was not a big project. He's probably moved down to Sally Ganon Road, okay? Okay. Next on the agenda is the ARPA report. Is anybody who would like to take...
Sewer feasibility first.
Feasibility.
I don't have that on mine.
Oh.
Okay.
Sewer feasibility study.
That was a late addition.
I think, yeah, it was...
We had a meeting...
Oh, oh. Okay.
Yeah, I guess we could... I think that Dave wanted a motion of the board to approve... We had...
Three candidates.
We had three candidates.
We kind of read through them. We went through criteria and came out with...
Dufrane.
Dufrane being the best choice for obvious reasons, because they've already started some of our projects down the road. So I think that we just need a...
Criteria, added up the numbers. Dufrane came out ahead, and we met with her.
So it's your committee's recommendation?
To go with Dufrane. We met with Dufrane on the 27th.
Yep. And I guess I'm not sure what exactly what day... I guess I'm motion to move ahead with Dufrane as the engineering, for the preliminary engineering study.
Is that a motion?
So I guess we could call that a motion. I'll make a motion to hire Dufrane to perform the preliminary engineering study for the sewer project or investigation.
And I will second that.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? This...
I'm not really familiar with Dufrane.
Okay. This is... The whole project is that the state allotted us some money, or allotted a lot of towns some money, a total gift, to hire an engineer to look at feasibility of small sewer groups or...
Within a downtown specific...
Within a downtown or the whole system, or just look at the whole thing again. Is that not right?
Correct.
So look at all the possibilities.
Yes.
Yes. And they're building upon what we had done back in 2006. And so they're taking that and then looking... And it's a much smaller scope than the 2006 study that they had done.
Because that was the whole town...
That was quite a bit of the downtown, going out almost to Daniel's Road, and then out into North Bennington on 67. And it's going to be much, much more focused on kind of the downtown area that is right around here and the Harrington, Old Harrington General Store.
For town sewer.
For a potential town.
Possessor.
Yeah, to just see if there's feasibility, if the prices are changed, if we can, in that small geographic area, get something.
And my understanding, this was not a loan. This was an outright gift.
It's an outright gift, yep, from the state that we applied for and were granted. Yes.
Can I interject? I don't... About an update, unless Tony is going to give one, I don't want to step on toes, Tony.
Oh, we were still talking on feasibility, wastewater feasibility. Andrea, we haven't moved on to ARPA yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble hearing. I think it's a little muffled, so I apologize. I'm having a little... I thought I heard ARPA, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, that was my fault. I thought, on my agenda, I didn't have the most updated one, and I did not have... On my agenda, it did not show the sewer feasibility, so I jumped to ARPA, but we are on the sewer feasibility, okay?
So my concerns are with the water rates going up and people feeling it. What's going to happen with the sewer rates? I mean, you're going to have to pay for sewer. That would be additional.
So this is all part of this feasibility study to see kind of what solutions they have. There's been a lot of upgrades in technology since 2006, when we originally had that study. And also, like I said, the geographic location is much, much more confined than before, partly because of the money. It's very much about how do we have downtowns that can support new kind of growth and revitalization of businesses and things like that. So that's kind of the focus of the study. They're taking what they did, so they're not kind of redoing kind of what had happened back in 2006 and then building upon that. And Dufrane seemed like they have done this in several other towns, including Lundedary and towns that have been kind of geographically near us, but also size-wise are very similar. So they seemed like they had a really good grasp of kind of what we want to see, and then they'll make recommendations. Obviously, it may or may not go anywhere, depending on what they tell us.
Nothing's going to happen without everybody knowing about it.
Right. And so there will be comments and...
My concerns are just, you know, we don't want to price people out of this town.
Definitely. And certainly, we don't want to do that, but we thought that, you know, it's been quite some time since we've looked at this situation, and certainly, a lot of people have communicated that that's something they're interested in, at least seeing what the feasibility is.
It's good to see the possibilities.
Right.
And I'd like to know the costs that go with those possibilities.
And so it'll come out when, you know...
Good enough.
Kristina? The engineer did mention that exactly, and she said the hardest thing to do is to get that number that people want, because, you know, at the end of the day, you don't know how many people are going to hook up to it, you know? So if you offer it to 100 people and say, "This will be the price," and only 50 people take advantage of that, then the price doubles soon. So your question is what she called out as the most difficult hurdle, other than the fact that it'll be a major capital expense, you know? So, anyway, she talked about that.
But they seem very poised to be able to answer a lot of those questions. They've done it in multiple towns surrounding us and seem very good at kind of having conversations about it with us.
I think the state is probably looking for kind of low-hanging fruit, too, to, you know, there's 150 towns with the same problem.
Weaving into double-digit inflation.
Okay. So where was I? I have a motion and a second, but have not voted yet.
No, we have not voted yet.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 500. Okay. I guess we...
Now we're on to ARPA.
Okay.
Andrea.
Yes, Andrea.
What... Okay. Tony, I know you usually give the update, so I don't want to, like, like I said, I don't want to step on your toes if you're really itching to let everybody know. But the survey, the ARPA funding survey closes tonight at 11:59 PM. So if you're still interested in participating, there's... The link is... Well, it's on Front Porch Forum, if you're on there. We've been really blasting it on there lately, Martha and myself, and potentially some other people. We have a lot of feedback from the postcards that were mailed out and the digital survey. So we're compiling the results into some, you know, good data spreadsheets, and then going to compile even more information, because we're going to talk to the school and get some more data, some feedback, and then present that to the select board in the future. So right now, we're still in collection mode, and a lot of great feedback. It's really nice to see what people are interested in in Shasbury, not just for the ARPA funding piece of it, but just in general, what people are really looking for, you know, whether it be business and recreation and all that jazz. So really excited to share that with everybody. So yeah, that's where we are right now, and just wondering if anybody has any questions right now? No? Okay.
Thanks so much, Andrea, for doing it. Thank you. Thank you for chairing this committee and working on this. I know you all have been working real hard to get as many folks answering these questions, so thank you.
Absolutely. And thanks for your help as well, Martha. You've been a really big impact and just, you know, ideas come from everywhere, and you're helping us, and we really, really appreciate it. So yeah, that's where we are now, and hopefully soon. I think, as Tony had mentioned, the next meeting is going to be the 12th, the morning of the 12th of August. And so if anybody wants to come to that meeting, please do. We welcome you. You can find the link on the Town of Shasbury website. The link should be there. And if it's not, I know that Dave Kernan will put it up on the agenda. So, okay. Well, thank you so much.
Does anybody on Zoom have any comments about ARPA or anything like that at this Next, I'd like to take up the matter of the liquor license. Don't know if you've heard the rumors, but Pollens here in Shasbury has a buyer for their business, and the sale is contingent on the approval of a liquor license to the new owners because it's not transferable. And the license are... The LLC that is applying for it is Buck North, doing business as Buck Stop. And they have a Shasbury address... Oh, I'm sorry. They have a Shasbury... They're in the town of Shasbury, but they have an Arlington address, okay? So this is for...
Appeal box.
Yeah, they have a appeal box in Arlington. This is for a second-class liquor license and tobacco, with a tobacco endorsement. This is to be sent up to the state for the state's approval, but it has to go before the town first.
So moved.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Carrie, five zero zero. And we need to sign under the approved.
Sure.
Pollens has been a huge thing for the town of Shastberry.
I know. I remember as a kid when it was a Chrysler garage.
Truck, exactly.
Pollens sold cars out of there.
Frenchy was, Frenchy Pollen was Art's father.
That's right. Looking back, boy. I, I remember as a kid, the blue and white, you know, little triangle flags that hung across the parking lot and all that stuff. Oh yeah, that was the coolest thing.
Yeah, I'll fill, I gotta fill this out.
Okay.
Any other business?
I just wanted to bring up, two meetings from now, our board meeting in September is on Labor Day, the first Monday.
Monday.
So I didn't know if we wanted to discuss that and think about potentially moving that, 'cause I suspect a lot of us are gonna be on holiday.
Absolutely.
So I don't know what makes the most sense, if it usually moves to the next Monday or another day of the week.
I guess it kinda depends on how much work we've got in business, we've gotta do and things like that.
Right, so.
Can we kinda look at that with David?
Yeah, certainly when he's here, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there.
Usually move it to the Tuesday.
Yeah. So I just wanted to put it in people's ears, because we shouldn't be doing business on Labor Day.
In one of the minutes we approved, we were supposed to be approving or giving to the public the speeds, the road speeds and things like that.
The ordinances.
The all, the ordinances and that, and closing down that one road. But I guess there was a, we hadn't quite doubled our, crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, so he had to send it back to some, the lawyers to go through it again.
Right.
We all received that and the thing. So I just wanted to let the public know that as of right now, on our September 19th meeting, we will be presenting to you a proposal for the speed ordinances. And the select board meeting on October 3rd is the effective date set as of November 21st for the final date for submission of petitions opposing the ordinance on November 2nd. And if we do receive a petition, we'll have to have a special town meeting. We won't be able to have a part of our regular town meeting, it'll have to be a special one, but it can be held in-house, okay? But if you were looking for the speed thing, I'm sorry to say it's not gonna happen tonight. Any other business?
Nope.
We need to keep looking for people to volunteer, please. It's very important.
That's for DRB and planning.
Both of them, okay?
So is there somebody that has gone from the planning commission? Because as far as I know, we, we have a full board at this moment.
No.
No, we didn't, we lost.
We had four, start with an Erin Cross, tells me that she's intending to resign.
I see, okay, I hadn't heard that news.
It's a five.
And we had five before with.
Mike, Erin, Chris, you.
Naomi, Mike, we had five, so, okay, I didn't realize that Erin is stepping down. Okay.
Can I interject about the volunteering with the Town of Shastberry? So I, I could be wrong, and this information could be out there, could be on the website, but as a, as a town resident, and like moving back to the area a few years ago, I have been myself confused on what the qualifications are for volunteering in terms of sitting on certain boards. Currently, I chair the ARPA committee and, you know, have interest in some other things, but for me personally, I don't know for others, but I've always been like, oh, do I need to have a degree for that? Do I need to, what qualifications do I need to have? Is that information out there so that people who might be interested in volunteering know that maybe they don't need to have those things? Because if people have more information, they might actually step forward. Personally, I mean, I didn't know that I didn't have to have certain, like the degree or this or that to be on certain.
Town clerk.
Committees. And my apologies about my ignorance, but I won't know what I don't know unless I'm educated on it. So is there a place that that information is, or can we potentially put that information somewhere so people are more apt to being encouraged to volunteer?
Anybody who's interested should probably call the town clerk, or contact the town clerk, and they would have all those answers.
I, I think.
Well, wouldn't it be also good to put that information out there on the website and direct people through Front Porch Forum, so that people have that information? I mean, quite honestly, from a perspective of like, we're talking outreach and marketing or communications, a lot of times, people don't call unless they, you have to go out there and get the people.
If somebody's really passionate about obtaining a position, they would probably seek out the, you know, help of the town clerk.
Unfortunately, the statistics show that's actually not the case.
Andrea.
When people get the information, that's when they, you gotta, you gotta tell them.
I, thank you for that feedback. It's something that I have been thinking about, and I talked to David Kieran about it a little bit, and potentially, I think it's something that the select board should think about.
Well, I, I think.
Drafting a little bit of just how you enter town government. I think a lot of folks don't, there's a lot of new folks to town, and a lot of younger folks that potentially just feel like there's a barrier to entering that is not there.
First of all, you have to be a citizen of Shastberry. Now, what constitutes that? Does that mean that you are a taxpayer? No, I just think that your mailing address.
Well, and that's changed, because there's a new law that just passed this biennium that actually allows non-residents that are of adjacent or neighboring towns to be on boards now. And that just passed, this passed. So now, you know, if there's a North Bennington resident or an Arlington, they have to be contiguous to, to the town, but it was a way for especially smaller towns than ours to have more people that they could pull from, from boards.
I, I think, as far as qualifications, I think what the select board would like is that a broad, a broad expanse of, of knowledge. An engineer, or a business owner, or somebody involved in tourism or something like that. The more ideas that you have coming to the board, I don't think, I don't think we want to focus any one board towards a certain thing. I think that.
No.
You want a full range of knowledge and input into something like that.
But I think also, you know, being on a board doesn't require you to have a planning degree.
No.
And, you know, planning or any of the things, and I think a lot of people, especially younger people.
Goodness, no.
Are thinking that they need to be a planning person, or, you know, necessarily something else, when many people could be joining the board. And, you know, I'm proof of that, having joined the planning commission. I had no experience, you know, doing planning work, but I think if you have a willingness to learn and the ability to kind of think logically about documents that kind of come before you, and have kind of collegial discussions, that's kind of, I think, a bare minimum for kind of what we need in folks that are, that need to, you know, join some of these boards. And there's a lot of folks that are on the boards that are really great mentors, and I think I would say that too. So, you know, if you're thinking about joining a board, there's a lot of folks that can help or you can talk to that have previously been on boards as well.
Okay.
Thanks, Martha, and everybody. Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm going, is, you know, I mean, I have two college degrees, but I, but because they're not in areas that maybe some of the planning commissions or other commissions are, I was thinking, oh, well, I don't know that I would actually be a good candidate for that, and come to find out, I, there are a lot of areas that I would like to volunteer with, and I know a lot of people that would as well. And I think putting that out there for those who are maybe just a little timid to know that, yes, we are welcome. It's about, you know, welcoming people from all different areas of life to help make the town better.
Okay.
And just continue the greatness that we've got here at this meeting and just going forward. So thanks for explaining, I'm, I'm glad to hear that information.
Any other business to come before us? Nothing else? Okay. The action items, we'll get this up to the state, the liquor license up to the state. We need to discuss and come up with a plan for a meeting around Labor Day.
Yep.
All right? Anything else? What else did we just? I think that, I think that's it.
Yep.
No other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Carrie, thank you very much for everybody's time.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.